Good evening. Welcome to the November 15, 2012, the inaugural meeting of the North Hampton City Council under the new protocols of the newly established city charter. I am City Councilor Large Bill Dwight, and as the council president, I will be presiding over this and future meetings. Mayor Narckowitz is in the audience tonight, and he will be presenting financial orders under the new rules, which we will elaborate on during the course of tonight's meeting. But first, it's time we set aside to hear from the public, and anyone is invited to speak on any topic for three minutes. There is a timer that will indicate the time once it's expired, and I ask that you please respect that. Councilors by their rules may not respond, so please consider that when you address the council. And first up, we have Mike Kirby.
Mike Kirby, 134 North Street. I am going to probably exceed the three minutes.
Please don't.
What?
Please don't.
I will. I guess I'm speaking tonight for the people down at McDonald House, many of the people down at the McDonald House. I have this letter here that I like to read, and I don't know who this woman is. I know her name, but I've never met her. But I think she represents a lot, the average person there. "To the City of North Hampton, we don't hate the monk Samana. He just won't leave us alone. He follows us. He prides into our affairs. He embarrasses us. I feel that he causes havoc on the elderly. He has announced on the radio about our tenant union vice president and how others of us are all bad people. He embarrasses us in public. He has harassed and spoken bad verbal words. He has lately played on a piano in our community room, some sad and cult music, never pretty or enjoyable music. At the farmer's market, he gets some food to bring to 49 Old South Street to feed the needy. We are not eating needy. The same way with bread and bagels, they are day-old and all dried out. Overall, we want peace. That's all we ask. Most of us don't want to be friends with him. Why should we do as he commands? Why doesn't he follow the tenant regulations in the building like everyone else? Most of us are weak and scared and embarrassed. We just want to live free from harshness. He can be friendly to us, but he should not command us. Where are our rights and protections that are supposed to be here for us? The protections for our disabled, sensitive, the fragile, the weak, the old, the young? Please listen to us. I have been there. I have put my own mother and aunt in nursing homes. How very sad it was for them to be in these places where they were afraid to talk, where they were harassed and abused for their disability and their sickness. It's starting to feel like that here. I want to be in a safe, friendly housing with privacy and fun get-togethers, gatherings where you feel comfortable, you can grow old in a place where we call home, have our own independence in our own lives, not going by his ways and means. We know it is no fun to be disabled or to grow old."
Do you have much more on that?
Please listen to us. Like they say, help the elderly, help the poor, don't be disloyal to us. Be a friend. Sincerely, a tenant. It is time for the City of North Hampton to read the Globe on its series on public housing and understand the cost of political appointees. The executive director of the...
Michael, you're way in excess of the...
The executive director of the North Hampton Housing Authority had no experience when he came on board. He had somebody that's a social worker, full-time social worker. He hasn't been around for weeks on end. I went to find him.
Michael?
He was at home.
Michael, please.
In his pajamas and bathrobe.
Michael, please.
At 11:00 in the morning.
I'm sorry.
One more minute.
But you're way in excess.
And then I'll go sit down, okay? I mean, a lot of times, we've played this game for years on end. People complain to the mayor, he says, "It's not my responsibility." Complain to the housing authority, nothing happens. It's time for the City of North Hampton to step up like they did with the post of the Economic Development Coordinator, go outside if necessary, and find an executive director with experience managing professional management of houses. He's got 703 units on.
Okay, Michael, that's in excess of the minute that you promised, and I really appreciate...
Okay, thanks a lot for listening.
Thank you. That's a nice start. Next up is Jasper Lapinski.
My name's Jasper Lapinski from Ward Three, and I'm starting to sound like a broken record here at Public Comment, aren't I? You see my green shirt and you roll your eyes. I wonder what this kid's going to talk about. Could you plow the bike trail, please? In tonight's episode, street acceptance. Three streets are on the agenda tonight, and dozens more are in the works. What is street acceptance? It is the process by which privately-held roads are acquired by the city for the sole purpose of shifting the cost of maintenance, like plowing, to the taxpayer. My question is this: If we have enough money to plow Valley Road, enough trucks to plow Hillcrest Drive, and enough personnel to plow Center Court, why can't we find the resources to plow two-thirds of a mile of rail trail, which is already accepted by the city and which, by the way, gets a whole lot more traffic than all three of these private ways combined? I already know the answer, of course, political will, but I actually think we have a really valuable opportunity here, the chance to turn campaign rhetoric into governance, the thing that people write about in books, and it goes in the fiction section. When our mayor ran for office along, supposing alongside, his bicycle, it's not as if he made some sort of campaign pledge to cyclists that he must now fulfill. In this case, if it happens, he will be going even further, beyond doing what he said he'd do to being who he said he was. David, get it done.
Thank you, Jasper. Is there anyone else? That's the only two people. Joyce? And please identify yourself.
Joyce Saban-Rasha, 67 West Street. It's still never another death month because it's the month of November, and this week, earlier this week, Massachusetts made an unusual record. We're the top state in the United States for admissions to emergency rooms for heroin addiction. We still are gravely short on our detoxes and our detox beds, and we still don't have one in Hampshire County. Haven't won the lottery yet, so I haven't built it, but I'm really going to petition in Boston that they help us out because Hampshire and Hampden really need a large detox. Thanks.
Thank you, Joyce. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? That will close the Public Comment period and move on to the roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Carney?
Present.
Counselor Dwight?
Here.
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
Here.
Counselor Labarge?
Present.
Counselor Murphy?
Counselor Spector?
Here.
Counselor Schwartz?
Here.
Counselor Tacey?
Here.
And next up is the approval of minutes of November 1st.
To approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One.
One extension.
Counselor here.
Do we have proclamations?
No.
No proclamations, no resolutions, awards, or recommendations. We're up to one-minute announcements. Any councilors have anything to...
Counselor Tacey said that he was asked by Tommy P.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, a couple. The City Council is cordially invited to the POW MIA remembrance ceremony at the Michael F. Curtain Post, 18 Meadow Street in Florence, at 1:00 p.m. on Sunday, November 18. And any of you that would like to speak at this ceremony, you're welcome to speak. I think everybody has the invitation in their packet, and it's always a very, it's usually, it's a moving, it's a moving remembrance, and we'd appreciate if you at all could attend. It would be deeply appreciated. Thank you very much. One more thing here. I just, I know we're not going to have the meeting until after this, but the parking on Black Friday, I'm kind of opposed to the city passing out parking tickets on Black Friday. I think it's, I don't think it's the right move. It's not the right message to send to our businesses. We need to do everything we can to help them out, and I'm not convinced that the revenue generated is going to be, it's just my opinion that I just don't think. It's also supposed to happen on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, and on New Year's Eve, we know we have our first night, and a lot of activities start for kids and things at 12:00.
Excuse me, Counselor Tacey. It's just on the announcements, or announcements, not lobbying for a petition, because I think that since it's not on the agenda, it would be inappropriate to deliberate. That's my only caution, but I understand.
Okay, but that's my opinion. I don't think it's a good idea.
Any other one-minute announcements? Counselor Schwartz?
I want to take my minute to acknowledge the tragic death of Palau Parak, which occurred on Halloween in the intercrosswalk between Pulaski Park and, crossing between Pulaski Park and New South Street. He died crossing that street, got hit by a truck, and just passed away in the last couple of days from his injuries. And I want to say that the Transportation and Parking Commission is meeting at 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, the 20th, here, City Council Chambers, where the issue of this crosswalk will be on the agenda. And I will be there, and so will some residents of Ward Four, and it has been a subject of tremendous email traffic by dozens of constituents, so it is something that I look forward to immediately paying attention to, and just want to make sure that everyone is aware that that commission meeting is happening where it will be addressed.
Thank you. Counselor Freeman Daniels?
The Walter Salvo House will be having its Thanksgiving dinner Tuesday, 5:00 p.m. Tickets are $13.50 for people who don't live at the Walter Salvo House. It's a Thanksgiving dinner with mashed potatoes and peas, and to cater to fare, it's usually quite good. And if you want to get tickets, you have to go down to the Salvo House and to the office.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Counselor Labarge?
Yeah, I just want to thank Starlight Center. Counselor Tacey and I went to it for their Thanksgiving dinner yesterday, and it was a pleasure attending that Thanksgiving dinner with them. And I know, Counselor, you could not make it because you were busy.
Thank you. Counselor Spector?
Just want to announce that at the JFK Middle School on Thursday, the 29th, there'll be a special City Council DPW public forum that will deal with sewer and wastewater treatment. And so that will be 7:00, JFK, at the community room.
Counselor Carney?
Thank you. And I want to thank Counselor Labarge for delivering flowers to the City Clerk's office on behalf of the City Council that expressed our sincere thanks for the amount of work City Clerk Wendy Maza and the entire team over at the Clerk's Office did in an enormously huge turnout of an election here in North Hampton. Thank you, Counselor Labarge.
I just wanted to expand on what Counselor Schwartz said about this crosswalk. I had requested that it go on the agenda because it has been a hotspot for years and years and years, and anybody, I encourage anybody that's had any experience with that crosswalk to please attend and chime in. It's extremely important, that crosswalk that gets you to Pulaski Park on New South Street. Thank you very much.
Any other announcements? I'm going to beg the council, oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Dean?
It's not during the announcements, but I'd like to be recognized out of order at some point.
Sure, anytime. Well, why not? Let's do the whole, I'm actually going to ask the council's indulgence at this point because we are now under the auspices of the new charter, as is evident to some people who are expecting to see a much better-dressed man sitting here. And as the presiding officer, as of the certification of the election, the new charter stands. And it should be pointed out, the charter was voted by 85 percent margin, which is a significant endorsement by the... The, I'm going to ask that we move out of order, the presentation from the city solicitor , so they can bring it up front so that we can navigate this. I mean, I think, well, my obligation, and I think all of our obligation, is to make this work as seamlessly as possible. There's clearly, we're going to trip and stumble, we're going to discover things that are surprises, we're going to run into some aspects that are confusion, but I would like to start off, if we could, towards the beginning of the agenda, at least having some clarity. So I would ask that, if you have no objections, would you mind having this moved up?
Motion to.
Second.
Seawald up.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And so we'll consider that a recognition of the city solicitor. Seawald Allen, make your case.
I've already made my case, and the voters bought it, and so, thank you, Mr. Council President. You know, I've submitted a memorandum to the council, to the council president, and I know that it was circulated, and I try to clarify in the memo, although lawyers are not usually here to clarify, but in this case, I'm hopeful that I can clarify any questions you have. There are a few things, just a couple of things, in the charter that the council needs to deal with sort of in the short term, and I've set those forth in the second paragraph of my memo, appointing a committee to review and prepare revisions to the city's ordinances. So that should be among the first orders of business for the council because the charter requires it to be done immediately. Within 180 days from the effective date of the charter, which was when the vote was certified, the council must enact an ordinance establishing an elected official compensation advisory board. That, too, is set forth very specifically on when to do that, and so I have suggested that that be something that you attend to, at least begin a discussion on how you will fill out that, how you will proceed with that bylaw or ordinance. There are certain changes that the charter has brought that really don't have sort of the timeline. For those things, my view is that we ought to invoke the charter as much as we can, as soon as we can. This is the will of the voters. Our old charter is gone. Our new charter is in place, and we ought to bring every provision forward as quickly as possible. For instance, tonight, we have the council president presiding over the council meetings. When I read the charter, one of the major effects of the charter that really doesn't have any timelines is changing this form of the structure of government and moving the mayor out of the legislative branch of our government. And so there are a few other things that I list in my memo that ought to be done sooner rather than later in order to effectuate the will of voters that we separate these two branches of government. Moving the mayor off of the two committees that I found that the mayor is on, the council committees, is something that ought to happen. Revising the council rules so as to be consistent with the charter is something that ought to happen in the, in the short term. And so those are the things that I have suggested to the council that you, as a body, get started on. To the extent that time is needed to do any of these things, the council and the mayor have the authority to enact clarifying measures that will clarify exactly how the charter will be implemented over the course of time, and the power to clarify ends five years from the effective date. So you do have some leeway to do, to implement the charter in a way that makes sure that there's no disruption of city government and that this is effectuated as smoothly and seamlessly as possible. As President Dwight said, there will be bumps along the way, and as issues arise, we'll have to deal with them and apply the charter. But those are the things that, when I reviewed the charter, when I reviewed your rules, when I reviewed the ordinances, those are the things that jumped out at me as the things that ought to happen sooner rather than later.
Counselor Spector?
Just on the third bullet here, in terms of, in terms of removing the mayor from the two committees, the Finance Committee and Economic Development, that doesn't mean the mayor can't come to those meetings. He just might not be a sitting member. He could still, could he even still be the facilitator of those meetings, or do we have our own chair, elected chairperson for that committee?
My view of this is that the, that the essence of our new charter is to separate. It's clear in our charter that we have a separate legislative and executive branches, and they ought to be separated. The one thing the mayor did remind me that I didn't reiterate was the election of a vice president to serve out until the, a vice president is elected after the 2013 municipal...
But just to clarify, that separation does not include that the mayor can't sit as a non-voting member on those committees?
The charter doesn't say anything about the mayor sitting on council...
Because we have non-voting members on EDLU right now.
As you might note, I said it would be appropriate for the mayor to be removed as, from these committees that the ordinances place him on. There's nothing in the charter that requires any of that other than a separation, a general separation of houses.
Counselor Adams?
Counselor Carney? And Counselor Freeman Daniels?
In the four-person committee that's going to review the ordinances, the four persons, are they counselors, non-counselors, or some combination? Is it silent on?
It's up.
Okay. And just the other thing I just want to point out to the council is that one of the recommendations is to amend certain of the council rules in dealing with the mayor's role. So I just wanted the council to know that since the vote last week, the proposal that I, the set of proposals, the proposed changes that I have come up with, I've amended those to change that language and address that the presiding officer will no longer be the mayor, as long as all the other proposals that are up for consideration.
Counselor Carney, then Counselor Freeman Daniels.
This is a follow-up to Counselor Spector's question, and actually also to Counselor Adams' clarification. The example I think of is the school committee for which the mayor serves as the chair, even though he's not a member of the school committee and has no vote on the school committee. So I wonder, then, if there is some presumption that's made that the mayor, by virtue of this charter vote, is removed as a member or even precluded from chairing in the same way that the mayor presently chairs in another body for which he's not a member nor a voting member. So I'm inclined to think that this charter doesn't make that change. That's just my thought, reading it, because present practice, whereas we have separate elected bodies of a school committee, we also have the presence of the mayor as not only a member, but as the presiding member over that body.
School committee. The school committee is not a legislative body in the way that this is a legislative body, so there is not that distinct separation. I would also point out that the charter does provide for the mayor to sit as the chair of the school committee and specifically remove the mayor from that position here on the council. That, to me, suggests, you know, the effect is that the mayor should not be participating in the legislative functions of this body. That's my read.
Counselor Freeman Daniels? And then Counselor Labarge, and then Counselor Schwartz. What she said. Okay. Counselor Labarge?
Yes. Attorney Seawald, you're asking us to elect a council vice president tonight. Why the rush?
Well, because that, because if President Dwight is not available, that is how the charter envisions the presiding officer to, that's the devolution of the presiding officer to a vice president. At this point, I would expect that if, without a vice president, you would have to elect a presiding officer for the purpose of the meeting that President Dwight was not...
Would two weeks make a difference?
Not at all.
Thank you.
Not to me, anyway.
Counselor Schwartz, and then Counselor Carney.
My question was along Counselor Labarge, like whether or not we had, it would seem that we'd have the flexibility, and I'm glad you, your interpretation is such, to have a couple of weeks at minimum to have all councilors present, so it's...
Exactly.
...a full decision-making process.
Let me just say that the only thing that the charter says about the vice president is that you will elect one after each municipal election. After each city election, you will elect a president and a vice president. So after the 2013 city election, you will have to do that. And so my suggestion is that it would be appropriate to do that in the interim until after the 2013 city election.
Counselor Carney?
Okay, I go back to my previous questions just because I understand that that's your interpretation, that the intent of the charter change is to remove the mayor from the legislative functions of the body. However, I see some of our subcommittees as not necessarily legislative, whereas they're kind of deliberative bodies where recommendations may be made and forwarded to this then legislative body that makes an ultimate decision. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure that I agree that the charter change that removes the mayor as the presiding officer of this body means, then, that the mayor is not only no longer a member of, say, Finance Committee, EDLU, or the things, but even no longer... I would say that it's certainly a stretch to say that the mayor would not be a member, and somewhat of a stretch to say would be precluded from even presiding over some of those. And again, that's just my opinion based from reading.
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
So I'll say this less rudely this time. I concur with Counselor Carney. I don't think this is really, I think we've heard from the solicitor on this. Solicitor's clearly recommending that we, that the council remove the mayor as a voting member, but it's, there are committees, right? So we can set, we can, it seems to me, we can declare the mayor as an ex officio, voting member of any council committee that we want to establish, and I think this goes hand in glove with the fact that we really should look at all of the committees and how effective they are at, at the deliberation of important matters in city government. And I would hope that those were, those would be ordinances that would be reviewed by this four-person body as well. And I don't think there's any rush because, other than really the fact that the council really can't compel the mayor to serve on any committee.
Counselor Spector, and then Counselor Tacey.
Yeah, on this four-person committee, I would hope that whoever's on it would invite members of the, who wrote the charter and had the discussions, whether this came up, because I think intent is a big point here. I don't remember if this was a point that came up in the discussions about the mayor serving or not, but I would like to hear from them, because if it was, and the intent was there, and I think we need to honor that. If not, I think the same thing, I agree with you. But I would want to find out what, what was behind this. And was there anything that you saw from the, from the charter committee that was indicating these, or that's your read of what the intent of the overall charter is, to make the separation as clean as possible?
I did not solicit the view of the committee. I just read the language of the charter and understood it to mean that... I just read the language of the charter and understood it to mean that the legislative branch would exercise legislative functions and appoint its committees, and the mayor would be executive.
So can I go back to my first question, then, after you've answered this, which is, in your opinion, could the mayor sit on these committees, even preside over the committees, but not be a voting member of the committee? Would you, just in your opinion now, do you think that's not enough of a separation? Is that what you're saying?
I don't think there's any prohibition in the charter to, however, the mayor and the council with the mayor want to set it up. There's any, anything specifically prohibiting it. I was just following through on that, the principle of separation.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Dasey, and then Counsel Carney.
So with our new charter, I understand, this is going to be a daunting task. We watched for two years as they put this all together, and it finally came to a head. And so now, here we are. It has passed by eighty-five percent, as our president has told us last week, and now we have a clear and concise document. But it's really not that clear and that concise. It's something that we have to build on from this point, because there's a lot of things that have been left out. So as we build, and I know we're going to make mistakes, we're going to screw up, and things are going to be changed back and forth. Once we pass something for this charter, how difficult will it be for us to change something if we do?
There are.
This is all-new ground for all of us, so.
There are a few methods of establishing and changing a charter. One of them is the process we went through with this charter, which is to request a special act of the legislature. That would probably be the most expeditious route to changing the charter. And I have no doubt that over the course of time and experience, there will be some tweaks needed in the charter. That's very common. But let me say that compared to our old charter, this is crystal clear.
Yeah. And my point is that we could maybe kick an issue around maybe a lot, and I've seen it happen so many times in the legislation, that we kick things, or not us, but any legislation will kick things around so much that absolutely nothing gets done. And I'm hoping that we can pull this together as quickly as possible. But I do agree with Counsel LaBarge, saying that I don't see the big rush in the vice president election at this point.
The key is for the transition to be smooth and seamless, and there's no requirement that you elect a vice president today or two weeks from now. It just is appropriate to do so that if, so that we have a succession of presiding officers.
Counsel Carney, then Counsel LaBarge, and then Counsel Freeman Daniels.
Thank you. I guess this goes back to, we've obviously made a presumption right now by having two empty seats at the table. The two member, two folks who were regularly at these meetings and sitting, the mayor and the finance director, are somehow prohibited. And so what my question is, is, and I'm hoping that the body will consider discussing this tonight, I do not see our, the charter change as prohibiting the mayor from being, nor compelling the mayor from attending this meeting. But it's my understanding that it would be a wise practice for us as a body to invite the mayor to participate to as full an extent as possible, as would ease informationally and in many other ways. And to that extent, to make a ready seat available with the placard that already exists. So obviously, we would want to have a chair that's sitting in the, obviously, central seat, but we would have the opportunity, then, to very easily forward questions to the mayor or finance director, as we have in the past, because there are so many items that come across our desk that do require some information from the mayor. That's just my sense of this now. We've acted, I think we've made a presumption that both the mayor and finance director are no longer here at this table, and I would hope that we can make some steps soon to certainly invite those members back to the table.
Counsel LaBarge, and then Counsel Freeman Daniels.
I want to, I have great concerns, and I want to echo what Counselor Carney had just stated. I was really shocked tonight not to see that our financial director was not sitting here. And I have to agree. I mean, we need to look at this very, very carefully, because a lot of issues do come up in finance, and who do we ask? Who are we going to ask questions to? So that's my concern. So I'm hoping we can look at this very carefully, because I feel the same way you do, counselor. I think something needs to be done here.
Section 207(c) provides a process for accessing information from the mayor, and that's the way this council as a body accesses information from the mayor under the new charter. The mayor, and my experience in other cities where a member of the council is presiding over the meeting, the mayor is not sitting at the table, nor is the finance director. This is a, they're just separate bodies. There's the separate branches. And just as the council doesn't go sit in the mayor's office, the mayor doesn't sit in the council's office.
Counsel Freeman Daniels, and Counsel Adams, and Counsel Spex.
Thank you. Two things. I agree that it is awkward to have the mayor sitting in the audience, but from my perspective, it's just because the chairs are much less cushy out there. So I think that we should allow the mayor to sit at the council desks, would require a suspension of Rule 47 for tonight. But I think it's really important, obviously, I was a detractor from the charter. This council cannot compel the mayor to sit in any seat.
That's right.
The council cannot even compel the mayor to show up at these meetings. We can, we can ask with written, with a written note, seven days ahead of time, for the mayor to answer questions, but the mayor does not have to attend. The mayor can send a representative. So I think, I think the separation is important, and the other piece is that I don't understand why we wouldn't move on the vice president. It's simply a matter of succession. The day that we, I think the day that we first convene the new council, we vote on the president. So, you know, that could easily not have a member there. The member could be on vacation, because it's like January 2nd or something like that, and a lot of people go away that time of year, number one. Number two, if President Dwight isn't here in two weeks, there is no succession arrangement. And, you know, he's, you look at him, he's a rock, you know? He'll probably be here no matter what, but it's certainly possible. And we have enough chaos right now trying to figure out this charter. I don't know why we would not move on the election of the vice president tonight. Just, it's, it's just like how the mayor, if the mayor's not there, the council president steps in here. If the council president's not here, we don't have any rules, nothing. We don't have a changed council rule, so there's actually no good way in which, I think we can possibly elect the president pro tempore. But, you know, I think that we have, we should move on the vice president tonight. So those are my, those are my two points.
Counsel Adams, and then Counsel Spex.
With respect to the point about, Solicitor's point about accessing information from the mayor and the new charter provision 207, for the council's consideration, one of the things I've added since last week's vote to pass the charter was an agenda item specifically for that purpose. So the mayor would probably want to be present, because one of the agenda items, if it passes, if the council likes my proposition and wants to pass it, would, it would be an opportunity as a specific agenda item on every meeting to ask the administration for information that the administration, the mayor, could provide at future meetings. That's a different agenda item. So that proposed council rule might alleviate the concern that, well, the hope that the mayor would be available for information if the council chooses to adopt that rule that's going to be proposed.
Counsel Spex, and then Counsel Carney.
Yeah, just a couple of points on the mayor sitting here. Number one, just the camera's problem, haven't panned the audience, but the mayor and the finance director are here tonight. And we have other city folks coming in and presenting to us, and we recognize them. We have DPW often coming in, who has information we need. We have the planning board coming in. I actually disagreed when the charter committee was having, had two meetings specifically about the issue of who would chair the meeting. And I disagreed with the final result, which was, I thought the mayor should continue to chair the meeting. However, it was very clear to me that the intent here was that the mayor, that the separation that the attorney is talking about, it was very clear from those discussions that they wanted that separation. That's what that meeting was about. And I think, to honor that in the charter, it was one of the biggest changes in the charter. You know, we had two big changes. I agree with you, there'd be a lot of things. There really aren't that many big changes. I think this is one of them. And again, I disagreed with it, but I think the intent of it was to have as clear a separation as possible. So I don't see it as onerous to have, and if we, you know, I would be fine if we end up with the chair there. I think this is the kind of discussion that can take place in that committee of four. I think we ought to have people from the charter committee who wrote it come there so that we hear these kind of things and hear where they came from in their argument. Because I know a lot of the public heard these arguments, and that's, that's how it fell.
Counsel Carney, you're next, but can I beg your indulgence for a second? Just by way of explanation, that, I am, we are currently under the existing council rules, which actually constrain me from participating in the debate. We abide by Robert's rules, and at some point possibly is my hope that we may consider modifying that. But I should say that what I'm, I'm trying to assemble a transition team to address these specific issues, is we're trying to address them, and then hopefully have at least some orderly review of these points, taking these issues into consideration, coming into, for the future meetings, and have something in place at some level by the next meeting, so that we can figure out rules of conduct, rules of procedure, protocols relative to committees and committee assignments, and who presides, who doesn't preside, order of ascendancy, things like that. Those are kind of important issues that actually come to us. So Counsel Carney.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify some statements that were made earlier about the lack of process right now in the council rules, should the council president, for some reason, be indisposed and not present at the meeting. Right now, our council rules that provide for the mayor and then the council president, I'll just remind folks, in section six, "In the case of a vacancy or in the absence of the mayor, the president of the city council shall preside." So that's kind of where we are now with the new charter. At a duly-called meeting of the city council, when both the mayor and president are absent, so I think that would be in that case when council president would be indisposed, "The city council may elect by majority vote a president pro tempore, who shall preside for that meeting and shall retain voting privileges." So presently, we do, you know, should Counsel Dwight suddenly become ill during this meeting, we have the opportunity as a body to elect someone to take over the meeting from that point forward. I do see that we have, right now, a way to address that problem. So again, I, my concern about electing a vice president tonight is really because I've actually heard from the absent counselor, Counselor Dave Murphy, that he would like to weigh in on this matter. And he has an unfortunate annual meeting, I think he did express to the council president, that takes him out to the West Coast this, you know, third Wednesday, Thursday in November every year, and regrettably could not attend tonight. But he did say that he was hoping to weigh in on the matter, and so I would just ask the other counselors if they would, you know, just honor that request, given that we do have a, have a process right now, should there be an emergency in the next two hours or in the next two weeks. And we do.
Counsel Dasey.
I just want to echo, or kind of chime in on Counsel Carney's concern about, some of the most important input that we get here is when we ask our financial director different things. And it's not just during the finance segment of the meeting, it's throughout the entire meeting. Things are always coming up, and if, I don't know just exactly how we're going to be able to access that information to move the meeting forward somehow, if we don't have access to the finance director during the meeting. It's a concern of mine.
If I may weigh in one more time, the beauty of this is that we were in the minority in the state by having the mayor preside over the council. And in fact, most cities in the state have figured out some of these things that we're struggling with right now. And in fact, actually, we're bounded almost by two of the newest cities in the state in the Commonwealth, and that's Greenfield and East Hampton. And I don't think it would be inappropriate to appeal to them and see how they conduct their polity, to see how, I know that Mike Tausnick sits in, East Hampton sits in the audience. But, I mean, and so I understand people's concerns, but at the same time, I think that we have reason to feel comfort, that we don't need to despair too much, because fortunately, other people have already dealt with some of these problems and have come up with reasonable solutions, and then maybe we can look to them for the, for how we, how we do our business. Counsel LaBarge.
I attended a city council meeting in East Hampton two years ago, and I was really impressed with that. And with the forms that we had on the charter committee, I highly recommend it that we have a president and a vice president. And it's because I saw how they operate, and everything takes time, but they ran it very smoothly.
I'm sure they've got nothing on us on time.
Wait a minute.
I believe that we're taking our time as well. Counsel Freeman Daniels.
So I'll just move on. We want to talk about the four-person committee to review the ordinances. I'd like to suggest that that be counselors. The clerk serves as the fifth, and I think that the council normally deals with ordinance, so I don't know why it wouldn't be counselors. So I'd like to suggest that the council, that the council president pick the counselors for this committee assignment.
For the public's information, and the city solicitor can actually weigh in on this better, the reason that the establishment of this commission is to review, actually, we dealt with the first one hundred and some odd pages in the charter. There were a lot of ordinances, some that have gone past their prime and are rotting on the vine, that don't make sense. There needs to be some cleanup. And this is the part of the charter where we enlist some poor souls who have to hack through this stuff. The city solicitor's done a fair chunk of this, along with the city clerk. They've gone through a bunch of this, but this, the reason, this is not a separate, we have an ordinance committee, but this is a commission that is ad hoc, basically. Oh, no, no, it's a standing committee, I'm sorry. I think it's a, is a standing committee for a regular review? No, it's ad hoc. So, okay, so this, this is designed to finish the cleanup, essentially. So this is, this is the subject that we're talking about, this committee.
Let me be clear, if I may.
Please.
The clerk and I went through the special acts that were attached to the charter. We have not gone through the.
You haven't touched it.
At all. Those were the multiple special acts that were filed over year, you know, time after time to, you know, to amend our charter, and we're trying to figure out which ones we need to keep and which ones we needed to be repealed. But I have not gone through the ordinances.
We haven't paid on that yet. The ticket hasn't been written. Thank you for the clarification.
Counsel LaBarge.
Along those same lines of the four-person committee, I'm inclined to think that it is almost within the charge of the ordinance committee, which I know has other potholes and other complaints and rules that we're charged with dealing with. But it seems consistent with the duties of that committee to also examine the ordinances as they are in the book for their consistent, for their consistency with the newly adopted charter. So without the chair of ordinance present, I still would consider that might be an avenue, rather than, you know, taking folks, other folks. I do agree with Counsel Freeman Daniels that it should be counselors, but I would suggest that it may be something within the purview of the ordinance committee.
Counsel Spex.
When I saw this, the only reason I thought the ordinance committee may not want to do it is because it's such an added job. I think it makes sense, but if, and the chair isn't here again, it may be something we want to postpone for two weeks. If the ordinance committee is willing to take it on, this is something you folks know how to do, and you've been doing it, and I would agree with that. I just want to make sure it's not too much, given everything else you're doing. So it was just out of a sense of courtesy that when I saw that, so.
Counsel Freeman Daniels, then Counsel LaBarge, then Counsel Adams.
I don't believe, I'm going to ask the city solicitor, can this, I don't think this duty can be conferred to the ordinance committee. First of all, you'd have to add the city clerk to the ordinance committee.
And then you'd have to add one more person.
Okay.
And then you'd have to add one more person, because the ordinance committee is three, and then we need to add one plus the clerk.
No, my suggestion was not to give the task to the ordinance committee, but to take those members of the ordinance committee, add one and the clerk, and make, you know, another committee.
This is a large job. This is a significant amount.
It is, for anyone.
For anyone, but I will put in a plug for the councillors to say that you also already do a lot of work, and this, but this is a, this is a lot of lifting to go through all these ordinances.
If I may continue on my point, then.
It's not only reviewing them, it's also revising them and bringing the revisions back to the council.
Are you suggesting, then, in contrast to councillor Freeman Daniels' suggestion that it should be councillors, because I think, are you suggesting that it's too much work for already hard-working councillors?
I just want to point out that this is, this is a year-long task.
Right.
Whether it's councillors, citizens, some combination, that's for the council to decide. It's a political question, it's not a legal question.
Okay.
Either one is perfectly acceptable under the charter.
I think that's clear. Yeah.
Counselor Labarge, then Counselor Adams, then Counselor Tacey.
Now he answered what I want.
Okay, Counselor Adams.
I was just going to say that we could have four councillors, but it might also make sense to have three councillors and someone from the drafting, the charter drafting committee, so just for consideration.
Counselor Tacey, and then Counselor Freeman Daniels.
And back to my point before, this clear and concise, I can, this is a huge load of work that I said before that's in front of us, and it's not, it's going to go on for a long time. And, but there's, and I hate to use the term, but there's some low-hanging fruit, I think, now that I'm kicking all this around, and I'm actually trying to grasp the enormity of what we're going to have to do here. I don't know if it should, if it should be all councillors, but what I will say, there's some low-hanging fruit, and it would be, such as the election of a vice president, is something that we could probably get out of the way almost immediately. So I would, you know, and I have talked to, I have talked to Counselor Labarge about this, I've kicked it around, but now I'm really starting, I'm starting to see that this is really going to be a tremendous project, and I can see it morphing. And so some of the low-hanging fruit, anything that we can get out of the way as soon as possible, I think is, would be advantageous to us.
Counselor Freeman Daniels.
So I'll just say again, just reading the, reading the actual rule, it says immediately after the election. So this is, we're actually past the immediately spot. So we have to pick four persons. I think we would be remiss if we didn't do that tonight. I don't know, I think probably there are probably four people on the council that are interested. If they're not, we have a problem. I'll say that I'm interested, so that's one. Now we only have to find three more. And it does, again, say immediately after the election.
Counselor Spector.
Since there's no immediately, can mean different things to different people. I agree with Counselor Adams. I think it would be very helpful to have someone on the charter committee if we could find someone willing to do this. They went through this for a couple of years. I think intent is a key component, I think to have somebody there who is with the process the whole time, I think makes a lot of sense.
Counselor Carney, then Counselor Labarge.
I agree with the immediacy, however, I think immediate can be in two hours or in two weeks. And the reason that I suggest maybe deferring until two weeks and still considering two weeks in an immediate definition, broadening the definition of immediate to include two weeks, because the chair of ordinance, for whom this is, is also not present, and I think has expressed some interest in being allowed to weigh in on some of these really important grade matters. So in my sense, I think that this is something that would still fall within the parameters of immediate, should it be dealt with in two weeks.
Counselor Labarge.
I'm going to echo what councillor Carney's saying.
Counselor Freeman Daniels.
I, I'm going to immediately disagree, so I'll talk to you in two weeks.
Any other thoughts on what, now that we have the city solicitor here, this is, we're on the clock, so.
I don't know if this is a city solicitor thing, but before we say what we're going to, I'd like to clarify what it is we're going to decide in two weeks. It seems to me we're going to decide, I think it's been put out there, that we're going to decide on this four-member committee in two weeks, that we are going to vote on the vice president in two weeks. Is there anything else that we're going to do in two weeks? That's a pun.
Do research.
If I may, I would ask you to consider how you would do nomination or appointments for the commission review.
Okay.
I mean, the ordinance review, so that there'd be established.
You mean on that committee?
If there are people who are interested or expressing interest can make a good case to you, so they can be presented. Just trying to figure out how you're going to do that. Counselor Schwartz.
So I appreciate you raising your last point, because I was thinking about that too, with this two-week delay and exploring who's going to, you know, if there is a member of the charter commission who would want to serve on this, what does that mean? What are we, how do we process that? And I, I would think that we would nominate, as it were, I don't necessarily mean it technically procedurally, but somebody could volunteer as a councillor to be the recipient of interest, you know, the point person, if the person's interested in serving on that committee, and that gets out, I mean, through this meeting tonight and through the minutes and maybe through the media. And we have that, you know, this interval of time where people can express interest, and we bring that with us to the council.
This is a council appointment. This is not an appointment by the mayor nor by the council president, so this is.
Right.
This is council.
But there's got to be some vehicle for collective.
No, you're absolutely, I want to be clear on that. Counselor Spector, then Counselor Labarge.
As chair of the appointments committee, and we have an appointments committee, if the other councillors felt that it was appropriate, I would say that maybe our committee should, I'd be willing to be the point person, and our committee could take applications and do this, and we'd do this fairly quickly.
Immediately.
If the rest of the council feels that's appropriate.
I'll second that one, too.
Alan, if it is, is it, you're understanding that we should actually present this as a resolution to defer this vote? Would that, that, you know, what I'm asking is, would it be appropriate for the council to take a vote to defer this immediate decision till the next council meeting? Or is it just understood that this is the will of the council? This is the part we're making up, so.
So what you're saying is, should we break the charter?
Well, immediately would have been.
Transition resolution, and I would pass it as a resolution, and because there is a section allowing you to pass transition resolutions or orders, and this may be your first one.
That's what I was, thank you.
If I may, just because there's a lot of discussion about immediacy, if we were being truly consistent with the intent of the charter, we would have well in advance of the vote, scheduled a meeting.
You're right.
Forty-eight hours or however, whatever, you know, our required time, scheduled a council meeting to occur at 12:01 a.m., so that that would happen as immediate as possible. So that's why I'm suggesting that, you know, we have some latitude around immediate. Certainly, we have until the end of this meeting, and I think we may have the ability to do some of this, not in a rushed way, but maybe a little bit more measured. I agree with Counselor Spector that we have an appointments, an appointments committee that is well-versed in evaluating and looking at those who've expressed interest and interviewing. And I would support that as being, and Counselor Spector is chair of that committee, as being the point person for those who wish to serve on that committee to express interest.
Counselor Freeman Daniels, then Counselor Adams.
I just, I don't know, I could, I guess I could read the section of the charter that is now the law of the land, of course, I didn't vote for it, "Immediately after the election at which the charter is adopted, the city council shall appoint four persons to a committee to begin to review the city ordinances for the purpose of preparing such revisions and amendments as may be needed or necessary to bring them into conformity with the provisions of this charter and to fully implement the provisions of this charter." That's the first sentence. Immediately after the election, it, we, the council president could have called an earlier meeting than this, but this is our first opportunity. If there is, as many of the councillors have said, a portion of time between this meeting and the next one, then it's not immediate. So it just, my, clearly reading this, I have to ask the city, I'm just going to directly ask the city solicitor, in your opinion, is waiting two weeks to enact something that says immediate in line with the charter?
Well, it, it does say immediate, and obviously there are different views of immediate. The charter also says that the mayor and council in office at the time the charter is adopted, and the mayor and successor city council elected under the charter, may adopt measures that clarify, confirm, or extend any of the transitional provisions in order that the transition may be made in the most expeditious manner possible. I think that it's well within, I don't think we're pushing the envelope here to do this in an orderly process, so that, I mean, we're not appointing people who don't know they're going to be appointed, and all of a sudden, you know, are sitting at home watching on TV and find out they've just been appointed to the.
Dave Murphy.
Counselor Adams, then Counselor Spector.
I think rather than have any further discussion about the definition of immediacy, if councillors want to move something to the next meeting, I think they should move to move it.
I'm going to move, that's what I was going to do. I was going to make a motion.
Take, see what this council's definition of immediate is by vote.
I'd like to make a motion that we move until the next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
The various things that I outlined before.
Thank you.
Specifically, all four of the, all the recommendations, we move forward to the next meeting.
So the resolution before us is to move the four bullet points listed in Attorney Seawald's memorandum to be decided and deliberated for the next council meeting, the first council meeting in December.
Five bullet points.
I'm sorry?
Five bullet points.
Five bullet points, I'm sorry. Five bullet points. That's, is that right?
Yep. Call the question.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Absentions? Passes? Thank you. As we hack our way through this, we'll, and again, I'm going to beg the community's indulgence and the council's indulgence, and ask that with some understanding that what we are trying to do is to abide by the spirit of the charge that's been put before us, and that we want more transparent government, greater distinct visibility of power, and that, that, the efforts, the deliberation you're witnessing is a reflection of that. It is our intent to enact this ASAP, but also not to be so rushed as to do it badly. So.
Exactly.
I appreciate, I appreciate anyone's indulgence. Counselor Spector.
Just one, a point of information just on this last piece, I'd like to ask all the councillors, if you know anybody who was on the charter review committee personally, because those people came from the various wards, it'd be really helpful if you could contact them almost immediately tomorrow or the next day, ask them if they'd be willing to serve on this, have them get hold of me if they are. That would be really helpful. Thank you.
Can I ask clarification from the council? Who are you inviting to serve on this commission, this committee?
Repeat that, please.
Who are you inviting to serve on this commission?
All right, I'll make a recommendation that, I would recommend that it, I would be open to anybody serving on the committee. I would encourage people who served on the charter review committee, if they are willing to put their names forward as well, and I would urge them to. I think that we should be open to, to anybody to serve on the committee would be.
Counselor Adams, then Counselor Carney.
Do you mean some combination of councillors and committee members?
Well, I thought the assumption would be, and maybe I'm wrong, the assumption was going to be three councillors and one other person on the committee. If.
I would just say, I do think that that's an assumption. I don't think that we came to that determination.
Exactly.
Of how many councillors, you mean?
Or if any councillors, there's been no recommend, this could be solely members of the drafting committee, solely members of the public. The only stipulation is that it includes the city clerk. So again, I think that that's something that we will need to, as a body, deliberate in two weeks.
Okay.
So as of now, we are opening an invitation to the public to consider submitting their candidacy for serving on this committee.
Of which we, so let me understand this, of which we do not know whether there'll be anywhere from one to four possible openings.
Counselor Schwartz.
And in terms of a community member understanding the nature of this commitment, I think it would be useful that the, and I realize it's a work in progress, it's not yet formed, and the committee itself will need to define it, but presumably, I mean, I heard, this is considered to be a year-long process, I mean, so we're talking about a one-year commitment, we're talking about meetings.
Once a week.
Once a week?
I bet you're. We did on the charter.
Three times a week.
You're actually reviewing all the ordinances in the city of Northampton.
You just said four times a week.
No, 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 no.
Four times.
It's a prodigious charge. You're reviewing all the ordinances of the city of Northampton and making recommendations for changes if changes are necessary, and then we deliberate those changes that are proposed and vote on them. But this committee is charged with a significant job.
It is.
So anyone who's interested in signing up, recognize that you're signing on for a lot of work.
With no recompense.
Yes. Let's be clear, no recompense. Counselor Freeman Daniels.
I'll just reiterate that I don't think that, I think that it should be councillors that serve on this committee, not only because we receive compensation for it, number one, number two, we deal with ordinance all the time, so I don't think that it's out of our purview, and number three, that I actually disagree, I don't think that members of the charter drafting committee are necessary to sit on this committee.
Counselor Labarge.
I have to agree with that. I really feel, just like with our charter committee, we had three councillors on it, and it was extremely helpful having our attorney with us, going through that charter and the language and so forth, but I have to agree with councillor Owen Freeman Daniels in regards to ordinances, that we are the ones who deal with the ordinances. So I like the idea that councillor Carney suggested too about the ordinance committee, I mean, you have three councillors on that, maybe one or two might want to be on that. But I think there should be four councillors to be on that committee, and then the city clerk. That's my feelings.
Counselor Schwartz, then.
Did we not establish all, I, I'm a little bit confused about our procedure right here. I thought we just had clarity that we were inviting invitations, and then we could decide, we could decide to accept or reject, but that we, I thought, I just want to make sure we're going linearly, that we made a decision to have.
We're going out to the public.
We made a decision to invite, or is that something we should vote on? Should we vote on it? Should we vote on whether or not we're inviting people, community members to apply, and then the council makes its decision? Is that a motion?
Yeah, that sounds fine.
I don't know. Are you making a motion?
Well, circular, sure, I'll make a motion. I move that we invite applications to sit on the ordinance review committee, applications from community members to sit on the ordinance review committee.
I second that.
Discussion, Counselor Carney.
Yes, thank you. This could go either way. I think once, as councillor Schwartz just presented, there is no harm in opening an application procedure that, even if it's still undefined, there's no harm in asking if there are people who are interested, to let us know they're interested, even if after that process, even if we see those that we find, we determine that we want this to be a body of four councillors and the city clerk. I do want to remind the councillors that as is the practice with any of our subcommittees, our committees are always open to all councillors to come and be present. However, I think the chair of, the chair of this committee should be notified, so that should there be a majority of council members show up, we make sure it's notified as a full council meeting, so as not to violate the open meeting law. But our past practice has always been that even though voting may be confined to those five members of a committee, input and constructive input has always been welcome from any other councillors on the body.
Just a point of process, I think this is what councillor Schwartz was also saying. I think we just voted that, and I think it was important to clarify the piece about who's going to be on the committee. But I think the other discussion, my sense was that we were saying is that we're postponing these decisions and even things you're bringing up until two weeks from now. Is that correct? And that we were going to, so we could have time to think about it, established committee, and we'd move on now. That was my sense of that vote.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Counsel. I, I think appointments and evaluations is well versed in evaluating any applicants. I don't think that you're going to end up with a thousand applications. I think we may be scrambling, trying to fill this, these, these seats or, or these positions. So it doesn't at all scare me to invite somebody from the public or whoever that would be interested in giving us some assistance in this, and it wouldn't, and wouldn't bother me a bit, but I would think that it would also be in your purview as appointments and evaluations to say, look, maybe we need four councillors, or maybe we don't need four councillors. But you won't know until you put it out there and see who applies. Who knows? You may get some stellar, but I would hope that four councillors would also apply.
Counselor Sleewall might apply.
Look at his eyes.
He may very well become a part of this board.
I should point out that when.
He's supposed to be on it.
When Counsel Seawald was serving due on that committee, he was a citizen, he was not the city solicitor.
Yes.
Being paid and on the clock.
Thank you.
By the Charter, is he, by the Charter, is he not also asked to be present at least in an advisory capacity to this board?
Yes. I'm an advisor to that committee.
Counsel Freeman-Daniels.
Can I ask a, can I make a friendly amendment to that motion that anyone who wants to sit on this committee needs to apply?
Yes.
That's including councillors? So, you know, that, if a coun, the councillor has to go through the same process that anyone else would?
The process of application would be just send a letter or email expressing your interest?
Well, that, that's not a part of my friendly amendment.
My only, the only reason I ask, when you, when you say that you apply, that we have actually what that means.
Again, I just, I'm making a friendly amendment that anyone, that's, that's mine.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'll just ask for clarification purposes, then, the same question that the president asked. If we are, if we can assume, if we pass this as it's been friendly amended, that folks could express that interest by means of an email to Consular Spector or a verbal request? And would that apply then to any members of the public or drafting committee or anyone interested? They should communicate directly to Consular Spector. It is, could that be, I know, I think I just heard Consular Freeman Daniels say that's not to be assumed, and if it's not, could it be further clarified or further amended if it's needed friendly to just expressly say how that folks would communicate with the, with the councillor?
Would you like to make that as a motion?
Well, Counsel Schwartz, you've had two friendly amendments now proposed to your, your original motion.
I didn't want to make a friendly amendment, I was just hoping that even the original maker would.
Sure.
Okay.
Is this, are we going to call this a board or a committee?
What's the Charter say?
And we have, we do have an application already that the city has.
Committee.
This is a committee.
It is a committee.
It's a committee.
Councillors shouldn't be making all that form.
No, 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 I get that, but maybe members of the public.
Those are, those are for mayoral appointments. That form is for mayoral.
Period. That's all they're for. We can't use them for anything. Okay.
If I, if I may, that, that, given the intent and what everyone's trying to do here that's appropriate, if somebody sends their intent or aspiration of serving on this committee, that that should serve as an application.
Yes.
But I, but I think, I do think it should be something written or, or email or something, not just.
Counselor, make sure there's a process in place that we can.
Just, just have a document.
Yes.
Yep, of some type.
So the motion stands, Counsel Schwartz's motion is what we're voting on as amended. Is anyone ready for a vote for it? Okay, all the. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Thank you. Bless Mary. We're voting on the amendment first.
Both amendments?
Can we do, take both amendments?
Well, you have, right, on the front of the amendment, you can take them both. All those in favor of the amendments?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Now to the original motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Objections?
Nay.
Abstentions? The resolution passes. We have any other need for Counsel Seawald? I should remind everyone that we are fifteen minutes past a public hearing on setting the tax rate, so. Thank you, Counsel Seawald. Thank you very much. And thanks for the memorandum, and you and I are going to be talking a lot.
There was no rush.
Days to come. So, now, we are up to the tax classification, the annual public hearing on property tax classification for FY 2013 for the City of Northampton. This is, we're opening the public hearing. Can I have a second?
Moved open hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Objections? Abstentions? And now, it would be appropriate to recognize the assessor, Joan Seraphin.
Move to second.
Second.
All those in favor of recognizing Joan Seraphin?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Joan, thank you for coming.
Good evening.
I recognize her.
Yes. We've seen you around.
Quite a bit.
Scaring at our houses for fun.
That's right. Tonight, we're having the classification meeting to vote on the tax rate. If you vote for a factor of one, that would be an even rate for all classes of property. And the expected rate is to be fourteen dollars and twenty-three cents. That may change a few pennies one way or the other by the time we do the rounding, but it will be real close. As most of you know, we could shift some of the burden onto the commercial properties. But as you know by my booklet here, if you were to shift, what we're allowed to shift, the tax rate for the residential will go down to twelve dollars and fifty-six cents, but the commercials would go up to twenty dollars and eighty-two cents. And so, even though it sounds really good for the residential, it puts a big burden on the commercials because their values are so high. So that is one of the things that you need to vote on. Then also, there's a residential exemption, and that sounds really good. You have to domicile in the property, so somehow we would have to do a survey or something to find out the people that don't domicile in their property, and they would not be allowed to get an exemption. The average house now is two ninety-seven, three twenty-three. And everybody in the residential class that domiciled in the house would get a fifty-nine thousand dollar deduction from their value, but the, the rate would go up to compensate for that. It was kind of hard for me to judge how many exemptions would be given, but the rate would go up to sixteen dollars and eleven cents. So that means the higher priced houses would have to pick up the difference, plus the apartments get the higher rate. That's the glitch in that. And most community, the Department of Revenue told me, there's very few communities that have passed this law. And it's usually people with seashore property, like down at the Cape. The community really likes that because it puts the burden on the people that don't live there year-round. The third option is taxing a small group of businesses. Give them a lower rate and subtract an exemption, excuse me. And they, they would get a lower rate, but the problem is that the owner of the property would get the break on his tax bill, and I'm not sure that he would make out a little check, like for thorns, for instance. I'm not sure that he would make out a little check to everybody in there. It's a really, I don't know who decided to do this, but it would be an exemption for businesses that have less than a million dollar income and ten employees. And say it's a shopping mall, maybe, and there's six businesses in there, it's two qualified, but they don't all qualify, then nobody gets it. So that would be the third thing. I thought it was interesting, we were able to pick up forty-four, four, four hundred and eighty-eight, oh thirty-five for new growth, which came really hard this year because many of our commercial projects were just started or partially complete, like the medical building. But next year, it really looks much, much better for the city as all these new projects that are going on, the two banks, the shopping mall, another medical building, and we'll be taxing the first medical building at a hundred percent. So that looks really good for the commercial base. I did want to point out, I don't know if you noticed in the next, the last page, we, we did gain a little bit in the commercial, up from nineteen point eight up to twenty point two-one. And this is, this is really kind of good because we used to have twenty-five percent commercial and seventy percent, seventy-five percent residential, but because of all the new residential construction, the commercial permits could just not keep up. So it's kind of healthy that we have been able to pick that up a little bit, and I see that getting much better in the future. Yes.
Can you explain the trend in the tax rate from 2002 and how it went up in 2003, then down for several years, and then back up again?
Well, it's, it's what we do with our values. Every three years, we have to get certified, but every year now, we have to be within five percent of a hundred percent. So for the last two years, we haven't, I'm not sure which, which years we did trend. I'd have to go back and look. I know in, in ten, we had a revow, and of course, as your values adjust, the tax rate adjusts. And then in oh seven, we had a revow, and so it depends on if your values are going up or going down, and the tax rate just keeps adjusting. Because of two and a half, you kind of start out kind of backwards. You look at the amount of money that you can raise, and you can't raise any more than that. And then you, and then you, you have your budget and then your estimated receipts. So you'll see the tax rate fluctuate. As you, sometime I should provide you with a list going back even further. I would, I look at the list, and sometimes we had a tax rate of seventy-eight dollars. Can you imagine that? That was before two and a half. So this really limits us. We take our levy limit, which the state gives us, and we add our two and a half, which is about a million dollars, and then we add our new growth. And of course, the new growth fluctuates depending upon your building permits, and they really haven't been as plentiful lately because of the economy. And then into that levy limit, you add your overrides. And this was the first time for the police station. So that made a twenty-six cent increase for the police station for this year. It was about, close to eight hundred thousand that we're raising for that. And then we have our other overrides that we're paying off, the schools, fire station.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes. Joan, as long as I've been a city councillor, I've always seen us doing a uniform tax rate. I've never seen it change. My concern is if a decision is being made to change it another way, how detrimental will this be to the businesses here in the City of Northampton? How and what effect will it have?
Well, I don't think in this economy that you really want to raise the commercial rate. I think we want to encourage more businesses to come in because that will help the residential people. The more that the commercial pays, the less on the residential people. And I'm hoping as we go along, and it looks like our mayor is working hard to get some people in, and we all want King Street to be active, we have two new car dealerships coming, two new banks, so it, it looks, it looks like even as bad as the economy is, it looks like the commercial is picking up.
Also, now, when we're talking about exemptions and so forth, say somebody owns a home, has a mortgage on it, has the taxes to pay, there is a way that they can go ahead and get an exemption from their taxes. Can you explain that? Because I've gotten calls about this, and I've called you on it.
Yeah, we have, we have exemptions for elderly people. And when Mayor Higgins was here, she increased the income by five thousand, which added to the number of people that qualified by far. There is an income limit and also an estate limit. They don't have to count the value of their home, but if they have other property or money in the bank or stocks and bonds, we need to count that. But we have quite a few, we probably have two, two hundred that qualify for that, and it's six hundred and fifty dollars for that elderly exemption. I have been down the senior center to promote it, and I went to the civic center one time. I'd be glad to go again in case. Then we also, if they don't qualify for that one because the, because of their income, we have another one, it's called seventeen C.
That's it.
And it's for widows or widowers and people over seventy. So there is no income limit on that one, but you can't have more than forty thousand in your personal estate. And that one is a hundred and seventy-five dollars for that exemption. We have veterans exemption at various amounts. Some of them are a thousand dollars if they are a hundred percent or have great disabilities. We also have blind exemptions if they have a notice from the Commission of the Blind. And I guess that's about, about it for the exemptions.
Isn't there another exemption now? If you're sixty-five and over and say that.
There is an exemption where you can defer your taxes.
Yes, that's it.
With the city. If you remember, at one time, you changed it from eight percent interest down to five percent interest, which was really good because a bank loan isn't that much. And so we have about twelve people that get what's called a forty-one A, and they have to be sixty-five. The other, the other two is, it's seventy. Some people are able to get that six fifty on the forty-one C, and then also defer the remaining or part, part of it. They don't have to do the full amount if they don't want to, it's up to them each year, and they have to file each year. And then when the property is sold or transferred, that money has to be paid back to the city.
So that's, that's section forty-one A?
That's called a chapter forty-one A. It's defer the taxes with the city.
Okay, because that's, I've gotten calls on that, and I've talked with you about that.
We probably have about twelve people that have done that, and we put a lien on the property just to protect ourselves, that we get our money first.
Counsel Carney.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Joan, on, on page six, you have a really interesting schedule, and it seems to reflect that there's the relationship between the value of the home and the difference in the actual tax amount is inversely proportional, I guess.
Right.
So the lower the value of home, you actually have a significant tax decrease in the higher valued homes. So the example being a two hundred thousand dollar home, we'll see a tax decrease of five hundred and eighty-one dollars, and a seven hundred thousand dollar home will see a tax increase of five hundred and fifty-eight. And so, I guess, I'm not really sure. And so I guess, I'm not really sure I understand the arithmetic of, of how that works.
Well, it's hard to know. I, I really don't think we, we have a lot of...
This is about the residential exemption?
Yeah.
If you're right.
It's hard to determine because I'm, I think most of our one families, and we'd probably have to do some kind of a survey, I think most of the people live there. It isn't like in some communities where you have a lot of rentals. And then in the two and three families in the condos, we definitely have to get in touch with the people to find out. You wouldn't want them to get this exemption, and they're getting rent. They wouldn't be able to get it.
Right.
But as I said, unfortunately, it's the apartments that get the burden if we do this. And one of the large complexes, I figured it would add $20,000 to their taxes if we did this. So I just wanted to point that out.
Counsel LeBarge?
Good question. The Board of Assessors voted on these, for the set of recommendations. Were there any dissenting votes, or was it unanimous?
It was unanimous.
Counsel LeBarge?
So you were talking about a tremendous amount of apartments and so forth, and there would be a significant amount of an increase to the, to the landlord, right? So which means it's not, because the people who are renting are the ones who apparently will get hit with an increase of rental.
Right. That's the problem with this exemption.
Exactly.
I imagine a lot, I don't know, but I imagine at the Cape where they have these exemptions, they don't have a lot of apartments, but I don't really know that. But we do have quite a few apartments that take care of the lower-income people, and this, this would be a burden on them, which they probably would turn over to the renters rather than pay themselves.
That's true.
Questions for more of these?
I'm really not interested in putting any more burden on the commercial sector at all. And I've always believed in this factor of one here in Northampton. We don't have the commercial base that places like Chickaby have and things such as that. And, and we are trying to encourage, but we've just hired a new economic development director. So I think, I think it would send the wrong message to stop the factor of one at this point. And I, I intend to, to support the factor of one, as I have in the past. And right now, at this point, I don't think it's a time to change it.
I don't, I don't think so, but...
Any other questions? Counsel Freeman.
So just this, speaking about the residential exemption, it's, it's, you state that it's just, this is, what I understand is an explanation. Because it's a fixed dollar amount that gets reduced from each residential property if we were to enact the maximum residential exemption, that's, thus the lower-valued homes would get a reduction, but the, the burden would be transferred. So it would end up being assessed onto the higher-valued. What you're saying is that the, is that apartment buildings get caught in this net?
They do.
Right. So this would be a, this, to enact a residential exemption would, would hurt the larger apartment buildings, or even four-to-six-unit apartment buildings in that.
It would.
And that will very much affect, I think, affordability.
None of them would get any exemption at all, and then they would have to pick up the higher rate. I've estimated it to be $16.11.
Right.
So instead of the 14.23, it goes up around $2.
To this...
And every thousand.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm set.
Many of the communities that, right away, they wanted to burden the commercials. Mostly, it's the people that have much more than 20% of commercial value in their, in their community. So they went the 150, where they, they increased it 150% their commercial. And then, of course, after a while, you don't, you can't do it anymore. You're at the top. So then they passed a law where you could shift up to 170. So now mayors are trying, trying very hard to shift it back, so to encourage commercials to come in. For instance, Springfield has a tax rate for their commercials $39.99.
And it takes, it takes an act of...
It's awful hard to shift.
...to play the body to, to change it, to defer more of the tax burden on the, on the common home.
So I'd like to make the motion that we, I think it's, I think it's, there's a, a language that we keep a factor of one and assess the tax levy of 1.4, what was it, 1.4?
14.23.
14, yeah, 14.
1.43%.
Is the motion?
Second.
Motion seconded. Discussion? All right, all those in favor of setting the tax rate?
Is it, can I, can I say, this is a, this a hearing? So should we...
Yeah, you need to call a hearing.
Thank you very much.
Should we allow that?
Thank you all.
If this is a hearing, should we, we allow the...
We vote on this, we vote on the finance. I'm sorry. So that motion, that motion...
Again, if, if we, if we have a hearing, shouldn't, shouldn't the public have an opportunity to speak?
Yeah. The public does have, yes. Thank you very much, Counsel Freeman. Let me clarify that the, our recommendation will come out of this, but we will vote about, on this in finance. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this? Recognize the mayor.
I would actually like to weigh in on it if I could.
Please.
As a, in my, for my new position in the Spectator Gallery.
Nice to see you.
I do, I do want to express my support for the factor of one. I do think it's important that we keep it. I think it is an advantage that we have over other communities, including here in the We've just had a couple of companies that have made decisions about whether or not they will stay in Northampton, including Cole Morgan. Today, I was at a groundbreaking for a company that was looking to expand. They did look at some other locations in the Valley, and some of those other communities do have a higher commercial rate. So I do believe it provides us with an advantage. The other thing that I would emphasize about, about it is that we, you know, we have a lot of small locally-owned businesses, which I think distinguishes us from some of these other communities that have maybe larger corporations where, where they may have that capacity, national capacity, to be able to afford those kinds of tax rates. We're trying to keep more dollars locally, support local businesses, small businesses, family-owned businesses in many cases. So I, I am a strong proponent that we keep the single-rate tax rate. So that's, I want to just make that plain from the administration's point of view. Thank you.
Any questions for the mayor on that point?
He's, he's from the public.
We can also ask the public questions as well. So duly acknowledged. Any other members of the public who should speak to this? Jasper? And please identify yourself again when you step up.
So my name's Jasper Lapianski. I live in Ward III. I, I chose to come to this public hearing primarily because Bill Dwight asked me to, and I appreciate that. I don't have a strong opinion. I do feel that, from a logical standpoint, people who live in Northampton, who own a property and live here, they live here. Businesses attract people from all around the Valley to come in. So I would think that, from a purely logical perspective, that the commercial rate should be higher. However, I recognize that economically, that is not necessarily the most effective thing to do. On the other hand, the economy in Northampton is stronger than in other places, and the one person whose counsel I asked on this is a local business owner I know, who is an extremely conservative Republican businessman. And after lecturing me for about five minutes on why we should never raise taxes ever under any circumstances, he finally said, "But if you're going to have a difference, it should be higher on businesses." And I said, "Why?" And he said, "Because people's homes are their castles, and they will react more strongly to an increase on their homes than an increase on businesses." The only other thing I can think of to say is that I did try to ask a left-wing business owner that I know, but she was not there. So that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Bill, for inviting me to, to speak at this.
Thank you for actually participating. I appreciate that.
Actually, actually, I would, I would like to add that since there aren't really business owners here to speak at it, it seems that they perhaps don't have a terribly strong opinion either.
If I made to that point in the past in these hearings, the Chamber of Commerce, at least, has represented testimony on this point as we review this every year, emphatically stating and, and affirming what the mayor just said and what the assessor is recommending as well. I mean, probably for obvious reasons, but that's been the case, and that's not the case today.
Are they here today?
No.
Okay.
I, and I don't think so. I don't see them anyway. Thank you, Jasper. Anyone else? I'd accept the motion for closing.
Move to close.
Second it.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Hearing is closed. Thank you.
Do we need to remake the motion?
No, we make the motion. We are now going to adjourn. Not adjourn, but recess for the finance committee.
Quick question for the, actually, into the counsel clerk. Is there an internet problem right now connecting to Northampton Public Wi-Fi?
Yeah.
Where I'm not getting anything myself, unless you folks are both connected to Sandbox?
I have not been on Sandbox for very long, so it's, um... It was working.
Mine's working just fine.
My entire packet is...
Oh, Eugene.
My packet isn't. I, um...
Would you like a copy of the packet?
Well, no. I'd like to know if I can go press a reset button or unplug and reboot the Northampton Public Wi-Fi. It's too far away.
Five-minute recess?
Can we?
Make a motion, we take a five-minute recess.
Second it. Jesse will second it for me.
Second.
Second.
Hang on a second. The council's running amok here. All right, well, actually, we need to...
So Mary, there's no modem. I can unplug or plug it? Okay. Thank you.
What's the problem?
The, the internet's not working.
I have to go to 4G.
That's why my thing is not working.
Well, if I, if I may, the, so this, I have to mention this late file now. Is that the... Okay. Before we, yeah, we're going to recess in the finance. So before, before finance, I should, there's a late file being introduced from the Energy and Sustainability Commission.
Yes.
The new appointment of Lucia Miller.
Move to refer. It's, sorry, it's from the appointment committee to refer, to, to recommend.
Right. Going to need to go ahead and suspend Rule 38 on this because it's a late file.
I'll accept the motion to suspend Rule 38.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of suspending rules?
Aye.
Opposed?
Moved to recommend.
Okay.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
We've moved to recommend.
Move to, move to recommend.
We've already suspended the rule.
It's, the motions are made and seconded.
Try to find the name.
We suspend the rule Lucia Miller.
Thank you very much.
Lucia Miller.
Union Street. The term from October 2, 2012 to October 2015 as an associate member for the Energy and Sustainability Commission.
And this was referred to our committee, I believe it was two meetings ago. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we, I believe Counselor Schwartz was actually at a Energy Commission meeting where she did a presentation. I also interviewed her on the phone. So we did, did not interview her. This is one of those cases where the committee did not meet to interview her, but we felt we would move this forward. This is an applicant who actually the committee is using, I believe it's her, is it her PhD thesis?
Yeah.
As a basis to do some evaluation in the city. This is a great candidate for the committee. And it's, one of those cases, and, you know, we're open, I'm open to hearing from, from counselors. If you are at all uncomfortable at times when we do this, we are, you know, we will hold a, a committee meeting to interview somebody specifically for this. But there are times where it just feels that the candidate is so stellar, or we can do a phone interview where it is, and then we can move forward with the recommendation. And that's one of those cases. But again, it, it is a shady, a gray area where if you have a referral, and we don't actually, and I brought this up last time, and we actually don't have a committee meeting, we look to the council to give us clarification on that. Until they do, this process works very well for the applicant as well, because these are volunteers coming forward. And if we don't have to bring them into a committee meeting, and we know that they're great candidates, then we ask that maybe there could be some leeway here. But we highly recommend this candidate.
Let me, let me add to that by saying that, in effect, I would say she had an interview times 10 by virtue of her attendance at our Energy Sustainability Commission meeting, where she did her presentation on the efficacy of the Energy Concierge Program, and what worked and what didn't. And I, it was, it was fantastic. It was in-depth. It was 100% voluntary that she provided this to the commission. I mean, it was in furtherance of her studies, but that she, you know, wanted to deliver the findings and, and inform us. And so her, it was, again, it was an interview times 10. She's, we're incredibly fortunate to have her.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yep.
No?
She said it all.
Any other questions?
I just have a question on the, what is NCMC?
Northampton Community Music Center.
Community Music Center.
Thank you.
Pulled that acronym out pretty quickly. That's good.
Did good.
Any other questions?
It's in your neighborhood.
Any other discussion on the candidate? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we will recess. We go into finance committee meeting. Moving right along. Was there a request for recess?
Yes, there was.
Is that the part I missed? Would you, would you, would the council like to entertain a five-minute recess?
Yes.
Is that their pleasure?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll, we'll recess for five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That way we get to reboot.
Welcome back. This is the Northampton City Council. We're now proceeding into recess for the Finance Committee. Secretary will call the roll.
Counsel Dwyer?
Here.
Counsel Barr?
Present.
Counsel Tacey?
Here.
To note that, and Counsel Dwyer. Well, the mayor is on the call for the roll call. The mayor is no, as of the new charter, no longer serves on the Finance Committee. The mayor is present along with Susan Wright, the Finance Director, to, and to present here, because they're representing a few financial orders. But as it stands now...
As a clarification, is this not one of those five bullet points that we're hoping to discuss?
This was not one of the five bullet points, I think. If this is, this is...
It is.
Is it?
Yes.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure, sure.
Well, the ordinance that creates a Finance Committee is not null as of now, and the mayor is still the chair of that committee. And so, this is the awkward situation we have to figure out, but that we're going to, and we're gonna take it up again next time. But for now, I would suggest, and anyone can feel free to disagree, I think the mayor probably should chair this committee because the charter doesn't nullify that ordinance, nor specifically preclude it.
Counsel, please.
I concur. I think that mayor can choose to reject that because the mayor, again, we can't compel the mayor to serve in any committee that's a council committee.
If I may, the city solicitor's recommendation, and also in this memo, was essentially that the charter trumps everything, just so we're clear, so that the mayor does, in point of fact, have the right to abstain, as it were, from the committee. But, Your Honor, this will move out of protocol and ask, what's your pleasure here?
It was my intention to withdraw myself voluntarily from the Finance Committee and not participate in the Finance Committee voluntarily, just as it would be my right under the old charter to not come to the City Council meeting if I didn't want to. I take a more strict interpretation of the charter, which says that I, the executive should... And there's a Division of Powers clause that says that the executive should not perform any, should not exercise any legislative powers, nor should the legislature exercise any executive powers. And I believe chairing a council committee, voting on a council committee, would be a violation of that. So, that's my reason at this point. I know that the ordinance does create the capacity for that. I still think that's an open question.
And that does conform, again...
But I'm here because I want, because I'm putting forth financial orders to the Finance Committee, so I want to be here to discuss them or answer questions about them.
Counsel Tacey, I'd just hand it first.
But in the memorandum from Attorney Seawald, one of the bullet points is the discussion of the process for the revision of the Court of Ordinance to remove the mayor from membership on the Economic, Civil, Housing, and Land Use and the Finance Committee. So, has that not happened yet?
No, we're gonna discuss it.
We're gonna discuss it.
We're discussing that now, and the mayor has just actually voluntarily removed himself. Actually, by my way of seeing it, it's a done deal, basically, that...
I don't read it that way in this.
Well, he does have, he has the privilege of removing himself voluntarily. So, as opposed to us removing him as a council, he has removed himself.
You still need to amend the ordinance. I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, no. It's still...
As if I'm not...
So that it's a, so he doesn't have to voluntarily remove himself at every Finance Committee meeting here on in. But in this instance, he's done so.
Well, I get it. I do think it was a bullet point.
Counsel Carnes.
Yeah, and I think it's clear that we decided we're gonna discuss that and more in depth in two weeks. I would just recommend that for tonight, for this evening, maybe, as we do with other department heads, we recognize the mayor because there's a list of financial orders to which we're gonna ask, have questions, and ask if he would prefer not to join us at the table than stand at the podium, and those questions can then, through the chair, be addressed to the mayor.
I agree with that. I'll second that.
Also, make a rule that says the mayor's always recognized at all our council meetings and just ask him to come to the podium whenever.
That's, I think that's something worth considering presenting, actually, as a package, so.
Can I just make one more point?
Sure.
This is just off, this is not, this is apropos, but I think it's been settled already. My reading of the charter, again, does not preclude the council from asking the mayor to sit on a committee and even have voting powers. My understanding is that the council can delegate. It's a legislative body to any, anybody. We could, in theory, delegate it directly to the mayor or to some, somebody who's, you know, sitting on the street corner. So, you know, if we chose to delegate, that's well within the bounds of the charter, so.
We can't compel them to serve.
Have to accept.
I would like to acknowledge that we already said we would have this discussion, because I have some things back, but we're gonna have this discussion in two weeks' time.
Right. It's the next council meeting, right?
The next council meeting.
So, that's...
Make a motion. We agree with that.
We need to move.
So, on the Finance Committee, I'm gonna move some things out of order because we have someone here, Smith Vocational, who's actually had to endure a long evening already. We know, we don't need to subject her any longer. So, we're moving the financial order of the authorization to enter into educational and operational software contracts for student information systems for five years, which is your second item. We're moving up to the first, if everyone's okay with that. This is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoits, who is present, whereas Chapter 30B of the Massachusetts General Law requires City Council approval for all contract terms exceeding three years, and whereas school educational and operational software should be locked in for five years for price assurance, and whereas a five-year contract offers stability for student records, data, and state reporting compatibility, and whereas a five-year contract will reduce the cost over time of data conversion and training. Now, therefore, be it ordered, all school districts of the city of Northampton are authorized to enter into educational and operational software contracts for student informational systems for a period not to exceed five years. The mayor and Susan Wright are both present for your questions on the Finance. Mayor?
Yeah, essentially, the, this is an order that will allow the Smith Vocational at Agricultural High School to purchase a new student database system. They're in the, they've undergone a process to select a system that fits with their vocational educational model. And so, you actually have a recommended amendment to this that I think can be dealt with on the council floor, but we are actually asking five-year be extended to five and a half years, because we, they actually like an additional half year for an installation process as well. That was a sort of a late-breaking piece of information, so I know the clerk has that information. But it's essentially authorizing them to enter into this five and a half year, or five-year, as it's written, contract to be able to make this purchase of a new software system. And this is software that all the student information and grades and all the other information is managed by the school. And NPS has a comparable system as well. And there is someone here, Susan Shepherd, from Smith Vocational Agricultural High School, if there are any specific questions about the software or anything like that.
Any questions from Finance or from any of the other councils?
Just an extension of six months. Is that...
Well, the original order is allowing them to enter into a five-year contract. They've actually since requested if that could be changed to five and a half months. So, that would be an amendment that could be offered in the full council. Yeah. If you were amenable to it. And again, the extra six months was to allow time for the actual installation process before that five-year clock starts ticking, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'd like to offer the amendment.
Okay. You're recommending?
Yeah. Amendment for, to make it five and a half years.
Question Finance?
You're in Finance, too. Excuse me.
For a recommendation?
For the amendment.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Mary points out that the amendment has to occur on the floor so the rest of the council can vote on it. So, you make a recommendation as we just presented it.
Yep.
So, would you amend your recommendation to the...
To just move, yes, to recommend it, move to the full council floor.
All those in Finance?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, we move on to the second item, which is setting the tax rate, which we almost prematurely voted on as well. I'll entertain a motion to accept and set the tax rate for FY 2013.
So moved.
Second it.
Second.
And this is in Finance, so I'm sorry. So, the motion will have to come from Finance?
Yep. We'll just set the tax rate as proposed.
This is great, because I can't vote or make motions, so it's a good thing at least two of you guys showed up, or we would have been really off the creek. All those in favor of setting the tax rate?
Aye.
Aye.
And the financial, the third financial order is appropriation of reserve from FY 2013 for the community preservation funds. Upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoits, and the Community Preservation Committee ordered that the following amounts be appropriated or reserved from fiscal year 2013, Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues $1,200,000 for fiscal year 2013, Community Preservation Purposes. $132,000 from FY 13 total estimated CPA revenue to the Community Preservation Fund, Open Space Reserve. $132,000 from FY 13 total estimated CPA revenue to the Community Preservation Fund, Historic Preservation Reserve. And $132,000 from FY 13 total estimated CPA revenue to the Community Preservation Fund, Affordable Housing Reserve. $60,000 from the FY total estimated CPA, you get it, administrative account. $744,000 from same account to budgeted reserve. Also, the following amounts be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund budgeted reserve account for fiscal year 2013, Community Preservation Bonding Repayment Purposes. So, $125,000 for principal and $2,500 for interest for Forbes Library Bond. $80,000 for principal and $29,192 for interest for the Bean Farm Bond. $501.42 for interest for Bean Farm Ban FY 2012. $6,000 for interest for Florence Fields Ban. There we go. Thank you. Second page was scary, but...
Yeah, I'd like to recognize Wayne Fiden, please.
Yes. There's a motion to recognize Wayne Fiden. Do you want to make a presentation first, Mayor, though, on this?
You have to move it first.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a motion first before we start to...
Look to approve.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, you want to step up first, and then we'll...
Actually, no, I was, we have a staff person here who can speak about it.
All right. You've moved to...
Sarah LaValle.
Sarah LaValle? All those in favor of recognizing Sarah LaValle?
Aye.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you.
All right, so this is the standard yearly allocation of the CPA monies that will be coming in into the accounts that will allow for debt repayment, allocation to projects, and reserving for future years. So, this has been done every year since the CPA has been in existence.
It's actually mandated by the law, the establishing law.
It is. So, this is the 10% set asides, and then the remainders into the budgeted reserve.
Yeah, and just explain, it's $132,000 three times. Just explain that, how the numbers worked out.
So, that's the required 10% of our annual revenues that are, that must be set aside into the open space accounts, the historic account, and the affordable housing reserve.
I just know that when you had said $132,000 three times, somebody would have a question as to why it's $132,000, but it says 10% of each of the items for the year.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Sarah LaValle of council? No?
At some point, is there a, is there a sheet, is there a spreadsheet that tells us just exactly where we are on every one of these items out for 10 years or however this goes, this goes out? That would be helpful, I think, if the council could see a spreadsheet on just exactly where the money's being spent and how far it goes out.
Sure.
Each individual item.
We can tell you how much it's being spent, but we don't know exactly what our estimated revenue will be each year.
Right, but, but you know what we have to pay and stuff that we've already put out.
Yes, as far as debt repayments.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and I think that would be helpful if the entire council could see that, because I know this is, this is enough for tonight, but just so we know where we're going.
Sure, and just a quick snapshot of that, fiscal year 2013 will be the last fiscal year for the Forbes Library Bond.
Yep.
There's 14 more years on the Bean Farm Bond, the Bean Allard Bond, and then Florence Fields has 15 years left to go, that, that one's yet to be bonded out.
You just put that on a document and just send it, give it, forward it to the city council or give it to Mary Madora's office, I, I think we'd all appreciate it.
Sure.
I would, that way when constituents will ask us about this, we can, we'll have something to give them, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? No?
Move to approve.
The motion's already been made and seconded, thank you, Sarah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's recommended. Susan, are you coming to give us any financial updates? No, this is going to be a blessedly short finance committee. No new business? Okay, move to adjourn, please.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning finance?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're back into the regular meeting. Well, look at that. Moving right along, thank you all very much, by the way. We're up to street acceptance, a petition for Pine Valley Road. It's a, to refer to the planning board and the Board of Public Works. And I have your petition.
Could we take these as a group, please?
Council want to take these as a group?
These are being referred, correct?
Yes.
Yes, well, the finance committee.
They're all streets.
As a group.
Second. Councilman Freeman?
Why are these being referred to planning board?
Do you want to move to recognize Wayne Fiden?
I move to recognize Wayne Fiden.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
It's required, I can't tell you if it's required by statute or by your, by the ordinance, but it is definitely required.
It's by ordinance, says Mary.
Put that four-person board on that.
Any other discussion on moving these as a group? No? All those in favor of moving these to the, referring these to the planning board as a group, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Moving at breakneck speed. Next, upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoitz, it's almost like he's here, ordered that the North Hampton City Council approves for fiscal year 2013 a residential factor of one and the enclosed tax levy percentages.
Move to approve.
Seconded.
Discussion. Councilman Freeman, you look like you want to.
I was just, when you said tax levy percentages, the enclosed is the reference to the recommendations of Joan Seraphin, is that correct?
Yes.
That's all.
Any other discussion? Setting the tax rate? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And, okay, this will be coming up for a second reading, but all those opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Yeah, this, this has come before you for a second reading at the next meeting. Next, upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoitz, and this is the, do you guys want me to read this again, this is the Chapter 30B?
Wave reading.
Wave reading.
Wave reading? And do you, now I would entertain an amendment for, to change the terms from five and a half years, five years to five and a half? All those in favor of amending the language of the length of term here?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, now, accepting.
Move the amendment.
The amendment's done as amended, okay, okay, all those in.
Wait.
Yes.
So, this is, I just want to clarify, this software expenditure is being overseen by the school committee of the Smith Vocational School. We have to allow them to enter into a contract that's five years, that's above three years. Getting the, I'm getting the nod, all right, so there's another body that's overseeing this contract, we're just letting them go beyond what ordinarily would be. I just want to make sure that there's an additional layer of oversight here. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? And that's going to come back next meeting as well for a second reading. Next, upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoitz, and the Community Preservation Committee, do you guys want to waive the reading?
Please waive the reading.
Second.
Oh, come on, I could do it in iambic pentameter if you like, and it's sort of.
I'd like to hear that.
Draw my second.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Sure, again.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you, this comes back for second reading as well. This is in second. On the recommendation of the mayor and the finance committee, ordered that the following sums, account 6,034,047, $14,669.64 unexpended amount originally appropriated for new equipment for the sewer department, $2,769.77 unexpended amount originally appropriated for the wastewater treatment plant modifications, and $19,726.67 unexpended amount originally appropriated for the wastewater treatment plant modifications, total funds of $37,166.8 to be reprogrammed and transferred into an account to be used toward purchase and maintenance and repair of equipment at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move to approve.
That's the wrong one.
I'm sorry.
It's out of order.
Did you guys enjoy my reading of that? Remember.
Is that, is that out of order?
You want to, you want to move?
Enjoy your charm, Phil.
We'll take it out of order.
Move that out of order, okay.
Yes.
Just went through the effort of reading it.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I said move to approve.
Oh, second. Second, okay. Discussion?
Is this, is this a second?
This is our second.
Second reading, I wasn't here. Is this for the repair of the facility that was damaged during the flood, is that what we're talking about?
That's what I recall from the.
I wasn't here for the, okay.
I'm sorry, you weren't here.
Yeah.
Ned gave a long presentation.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll talk to, fine, if you guys have already hashed this out, that's fine, yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor in the second reading?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, now here, out of order, upon the recommendation of the mayor and the finance committee, ordered that the following sums, $17,698.51 unexpended amount originally appropriated for Phase 5 of the landfill project for engineering and permitting, $40,598.92 unexpended amount originally appropriated for Phase 5 of the landfill project for expansion, $29,955.99 unexpended amount originally appropriated for Phase 4 of the landfill project for improvements, the total funds being $88,253.42 to be reprogrammed and transferred into an account used towards the costs involved in decommissioning of the solid waste landfill Leachade Plant.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion in the second reading? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you. That's the final. Also in second reading, upon the recommendation of the mayor and the finance committee, ordered that the following sums, $2,987.77 unexpended amount originally appropriated for sewer work, $4,506.86 unexpended amount originally appropriated for the Elm Street drainage repair, and the total funds being $7,494.63 to be reprogrammed and transferred into an account to be used towards storm drain work on Sylvester Road.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Freeman?
So most of these orders are reprogramming old funds, and I do hope that the mayor and finance director can find the rest of the unspent but allocated funds so that we can have a real true assessment of, of what needs, what kind of work has been completed and what, what new priorities we can assign these, these, these funds for. And possibly, hopefully seeing that in the next few months is something that I'd like to have happen.
Would you like to recognize Susan Wright and ask her how it's going?
If, if no one's desirous to speak, then I don't want to put anyone on the spot.
I will just say that I, as we've discussed before, we are doing that, and we, we actually will be bringing forward some other similar orders very soon to do similar reallocations where we've identified unspent borrowing authority or in some cases, money that's already been borrowed and there's tailing, so we are committed to doing that and particularly trying to put together a capital plan, so we will, we want to make sure we have all available capital resources, so.
Can I, since you did step up, is it the case that if it's, if the money is just put into, if, if money that's been allocated is then put, if it's not reprogrammed immediately, but put, put into free cash or something, does it, does it go away because it has been certified, is there some problem with that, so it has to be reprogrammed rather than?
It's more about when we, when we borrow and we, you know, the borrowing is often based on authorization from the council, and so in the case here, you borrow, the authorization was, you know, and there was for these storm drain projects, and we now want to use, change the use of that, so that's why we're moving it to this new purpose to finish off this Sylvester Road project. I don't know that it necessarily reverts to free cash once we've already borrowed and authorized the money, so.
Borrowed money has to be used for a purpose for which it was originally borrowed.
Yeah.
For the same length of time and the same type of purpose, you can't put borrowed money back into the general fund.
And, and what about fund, that, funds that weren't borrowed, that were just allocated but never spent? Because some of that is here as well, if I'm not mistaken.
You should step up. Susan, thank you.
Yeah, for the public.
So, money that begins with, when you see the account number 3,000, that's borrowed money. Money that begins with the number 19303 is cash capital, that could be, that could be sent back to the general fund, that could be sent back to free cash. Money that begins with 6,000, which a couple of these orders do, that's, that's money in one of the enterprise funds, and that has to remain within the enterprise fund, but it could be released from its purpose and put back into the free cash of that particular enterprise fund.
Could you first, Councilor Tacey Spence, who was not here at the last meeting, explain how we came upon these monies, that, how you, the, should, Councilor Tacey, the, through the diligence of Susan Wright and the mayor, they've actually, they're finding dormant money, for lack of a better term, maybe you could have a better phrase for it, but.
It's not really found money, it's every year at the end of the fiscal year, every department head has to, has to submit a form for every existing capital project to say whether they want those funds carried forward, so these are not found monies, these are monies that have been carried forward, it's just the, the mayor, the mayor's position is that these monies need to be put to work rather than sit there, so we're moving these monies into projects that are active rather than let them sit there for projects that have become dormant because the project's original purpose is either completed or, or not necessary anymore, so it's not money that we didn't know about, this is money we've always known about, we're just making a conscious management decision to use that money and put it to work, so.
We had found money sitting in capital improvements over the years, like in, in parking that sat there for five or six years, that never got, so this is all part of the same process, and I, no, this isn't the first time we've, we've found some of this and done this in the last several months, we've continued to find.
Again, not, I think it is important to emphasize not found, because these are all, this is all on the books, what happens is, projects sometimes take multiple years, so we carry that money forward, but at a certain point, if a project's either not going to go forward or it's been done and there's tailings left, we should just reallocate that money and use it for other projects that are worthy, so we're just trying to really make sure that we're managing that going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. This is in the first reading. Upon the recommendation of the planning board and the historic commission, ordered that whereas the Clark School campus contains a rich architectural and human history, and whereas Opal Real Estate Group and Historic Round Hill Summit LLC have an agreement with Clark School to purchase the majority of the campus for redevelopment, and whereas the planning board has issued a site plan approval for such redevelopment, and whereas said redevelopment is consistent with a sustainable North Hampton comprehensive plan, will preserve the historic buildings and campus, and will create needed housing and economic development within walking distance of downtown, and whereas, in accordance, in accordance with the incentives and North Hampton zoning and an offer by Opal Real Estate Group, the site plan approval requires that a historic preservation restriction be replaced, be placed on the redevelopment, redeveloped portion of the campus, and whereas, in a public hearing and public meeting respectively, the planning board and the historical commission have approved the historic preservation restriction, and now therefore be it ordered further, the city council authorized the city of North Hampton acting through its mayor and historic, except the preservation restriction as defined by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 184, Section 31, on said land for historic preservation purposes.
So move.
Seconded, and I would like to recognize Wayne Fiden.
Seconded.
All those in favor of recognizing Wayne Fiden?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Wayne, thank you.
So, short version, if you remember, city council passed zoning six or eight months ago, which created incentive for the reuse of historical buildings, so Opal could have developed all of the Clark School buildings they're buying in accordance with the zoning, and if they ever wanted to, deter any buildings up there. The new zoning says we're going to give you some additional uses to create a financial incentive to save the buildings, but only if you're willing to guarantee the buildings will stay up forever. And so based on that section of zoning, planning board approved Opal's project about three weeks ago, and this is their, that next step is, okay, they've now guaranteed to preserve the buildings forever, the mechanism for doing that is to put historic preservation restriction on the buildings.
So this was amicable with everybody, was it? The developer and?
Yeah.
Just curious.
Certainly amicable with the developer, certainly amicable with the planning board. I think the neighborhood frankly is split, I think they love saving the historical buildings, they like the summary use, they're worried about the amount of traffic the project will generate, so.
I get a lot, I get a lot of calls about the traffic.
Right, right, so except for the traffic, yes, it's amicable, that's.
Councilor?
I think in terms of this, of the, I think there definitely is concern about the traffic, I think in terms of the historic preservation.
Exactly.
We're discussing, I don't think there was much opposition to that, and I think the neighborhood wanted this to be there, I think the, the only opposition was if Opal hadn't, the reason we didn't come forward earlier, correct me if I'm wrong, was that there was, Clark School was not too happy about having a historic preservation, if Opal had not purchased this, that would have limited who might have come in, is that correct?
That's correct, but remember, there's two steps you're going to see, these are historic preservation restrictions, it's a voluntary agreement, it's, it's in perpetuity, it would no longer be voluntary once they sign this, but they wouldn't have had to sign this, we don't have the right to mandate someone to give us property, so these go with each buildings, these don't protect the grounds, just the buildings. We still expect to come back before you all in January and February to expand what's now the Elm Street Historic District, will become the Elm Street Round Hill Historic District, and that will be in January or February, and that's exactly what, what Council Specter said as well.
But my reason for the question was, was the atmosphere, and I didn't attend the meetings, the atmosphere in which it, was it arm twisting on their part or arm twisting on our part, or was it just amicable?
Well, I'll give you my opinion, I think in terms of having these two steps with the historic process, I think there was general agreement, I think there are some concerns, if you're talking about traffic, but that's a different.
Well, I'm not talking about traffic.
Okay, so in terms of.
Just the atmosphere of the agreement?
Yes.
I think yes, I think the answer is yes.
Okay.
I, I think there are some people in the neighborhood who would have also liked this to cover trees and landscaping, and that, we don't have the right to do this, correct?
Exactly.
And I, I think in the end, they all agreed to, so, two members came to historical commission, and there was a good discussion in the end, they said, we understand where our concerns are related, but.
So between the city of North Hampton and the developer, you worked together to?
Yes.
To make this work?
Yes.
And the atmosphere was good, okay, that's all I needed to know.
It might be, can I make one more?
Councilor Specter and Councilman Freeman?
Just so you understand, the, the developer in this case is applying for very, for federal historic grants, is that correct? So that this particular developer, yes, because they're actually applying for things that require them to have a historic nature to the property. So, if anything, there would have been, as I think Wayne is pointing out, if anything, folks would have liked to have seen this stronger, but we didn't have the, we can't do that.
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
Thank you. Is it, I wish someone from Opal were here. They signed, they've, they've agreed to this through the site plan approval process?
That's correct.
So, here's a hypothetical question. What if Opal is unable to secure financing or has enough construction delays where they go out of business, and they have to sell the property? The historic preservation continued, the restriction continues with their sale of it?
That's correct. Now, the timing, of course, is Opal, or the LLC they're setting up, will be the one granting this. They don't yet own the property. So, if that bad thing happens, and they never execute the deal, this wouldn't be an effect. So, what you're giving us authority for is to actually accept the historic preservation restriction. We won't accept it, we can't accept it until they actually sell the property, until...
Right, so, but, thank you. I just want to understand, though, that this would, if Opal, Opal has a specific plan, that if it doesn't happen, the historic preservation restriction could be a significant albatross when trying, when trying to market this property to any other kind of developer. Is that correct?
I think that's correct. It's certainly why Clark School was very concerned about this. I think the reason Opal's not concerned about that is, this has been a year and a half process. They're not taking title till they've checked off everything in the process. So, they're not taking title till they're confident that it doesn't happen. The reality is, if they sold the property and this depreciated the value, their basis in the property would be less. They'd be selling it for less than they bought it for. So, in essence, they'd be, they're subsidy making the historic preservation possible.
Right, it was a bad deal for them, but it's also not a great deal for the city, because now we have abandoned buildings on Round Hill Road.
Right, I mean, all that's true. If Opal failed to deliver, that's absolutely true, that it would be harder for the next developer to tear down the buildings, that's what this is all about. But Opal is the one who's taking that financial risk. They're saying, "We think the permits add so much value to the property, that the buildings with historic preservation restriction, which your right to pre, lowers the value, plus the permits from the Planning Board, overall nets more value to them."
Thank you, I just, I'll speak then in general. I have hesitation about issuing this authority until I hear from... Well, I, I actually don't know, and I'd like to see the ground get broken before, before really they put a historic preservation, because anything can happen between now, I mean, as we saw with the hotel property, for instance, anything can happen between now and when the actual redevelopment takes place, and if there's a historic restriction on it, it could, it could really make that property much harder to market.
Counselor.
Well, we've been through this, and I think your point is well taken. I think, however, person right now, if Opal were to back out, that the, first of all, if Opal backs out right now, as you said, this won't go into effect. But for one thing, the neighborhood very much wants this in effect, and wants to preserve the nature of this area, and I'm grateful, I think there are some problems, but I think most neighbors are grateful that Opal is going to come in and preserve an area that is very unique and very close to the city. So, this is something that the neighborhood wants very strongly, and so, I'm going to back it. And Clark School has been, you know, all along, has been the one holding the bag in this, that they didn't want this to go through, until they were assured that Opal was going to move forward. So, I hear your concerns, but they've been discussed a great deal, and I feel pretty confident at this point to move this forward.
If I may, Wayne, historically, this has been, the neighborhood has been divided, as has been pointed out, and if there was a contingent of the neighborhood that was so, that have expressed some resistance to, or some disapproval of Opal being the developer, or able to put up obstacles that would prevent them from, or proceeding to the point where they feel that it's within their economic interest, then the scenario that Counselor Freeman Daniels paints is problematic for the, for the community.
If I could say something else in terms of why the timing is critical, and why I think Opal hopes you go forward in this piece, is I think there's a separate risk from Opal's standpoint. You all approve the historic preservation restriction. It then has to be approved by the Commonwealth, and that can be a frustratingly slow process. So, I think from Opal's standpoint, taking title to the property and then having to wait for a approval process would really scare them, because at this point, they have no carrying costs. Once they have a carrying cost, they'd like to go quickly, and so, that's the reason we're trying to move forward in good faith, to get the approvals, because that, you know, in terms, the carrying costs would kill projects frankly. So, I think that's why they're hopeful we're going forward.
Counselor LeBarge?
Thank you. I have to agree with Counselor Spector. There have been many hearings on this. I think the developer has worked very well with the neighbors, and I think by putting this historic preservation in that site is one of the best things that could happen there. The buildings are just absolutely beautiful. So, I think the voices of the residents are valued here, and also with the builder, working with the residents and the city. I'm going to support it.
Counselor Casey?
You were right in my head when you brought up the hotel, but it... But we don't own, we own the property here. We do not own the Clark School campus, but the, I'd hate to see the buildings, if this fell apart, be abandoned. We know what happens to abandoned buildings. Look at the North Hampton Nursing Home. So, but anyway, I'm going to, I'm going to support it, and I'm going to hope that it all goes well. You don't know, and like, traffic concerns that doesn't play into this, but they are beautiful buildings, and I know the neighbors on Crescent Street had actually tried to buy, or tried to purchase that piece behind their homes, and it didn't work out, so, you know that very well. It's in your ward. So, I'm going to support it, but I am, I'm a little leery whether or not all of this actually happens the way we think it'll happen. I hope it does, so I'm going to support it. And I, I wish Opal and Clark School the best of luck, but I've got reservations.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes, Wayne, we are in dire need of housing. Would this be affordable housing?
This would not be affordable housing. These are, they're rental housing, but they're expected to be the high end of the market. If I could add one other point to Counselor Casey's point, which is, I really think you all should be proud of the zoning that you passed a few months ago for exactly that point. I think had the only option been housing was allowed on the site, you would have run a much greater, greater risk of the buildings being empty. This is sort of the carrot and the stick, that the stick being, we have to put historic preservation restriction, but you've now, because the zoning that you've passed, you've now given them far more options for redevelopment property, and so, the likelihood of the buildings not finding an end user is much lower, certainly never zero, but much lower.
So, can I just follow up on that point? Maybe it's, maybe it's, partially my reservations are, I don't exactly understand a preservation restriction here. How would that, how, obviously, the zoning that we passed allowed for a much greater use and density of, given, as long as the exterior facades and so on of the, of the existing structures were preserved, how does that play, what's the interplay between that and a historic preservation restriction?
So, historic preservation restriction is in essence a permanent agreement. I mean, nothing prevents hurricanes and tornadoes, but assuming the buildings don't have calamity, it guarantees those buildings remain well beyond what some zoning could be in the future. So, it's a permanent commitment. Doesn't cover the gymnasium, because it's not a historical building, but all the other buildings are protected. It's only protecting the outside shell of the building, so this has nothing to do with use. Use will evolve as market demands evolves. They can always change the use of the building.
So, what you're saying is that it's similar to the kind of zoning that we, that Opal will be taking advantage of?
That's correct.
As far as preserving the exterior and many of this, many of the architectural features, but being able to reorganize the inside?
That's correct.
I, thank you, that was very helpful. And I, it's nice to get something, a letter or something from Opal, saying that they're very, that they have a good plan, but I think that it's been had in lower committees and with the, from the Planning Board, so.
Counselor Casey?
The outside shell, but that's not in its entirety, it's what you view from the street in passing. Is that correct?
Historic preservation restriction is the entire shell. What you're thinking of is historic district. Historic district only preserves things from the road. Historic preservation restriction does include the entire shell, but it doesn't mean you can never do a change, it just creates a process. So, they need to do a roof penetration, for example, for a new smokestack, or they need to do an expansion of the building, they have to come before the Historical Commission for approval, and there's a clear criteria for doing it. So, it doesn't mean no change, it just means we get to review that change.
Okay, so, let me expand on my initial question about the atmosphere. I had asked about Opal and the city, what about Clark School?
Clark School's very happy, you know, Clark School is only...
Very happy.
Yeah, they're only, you know, I mean, you know, Counsel Freeman Daniels' concern, I understand. If the deal falls apart, Clark School is very unhappy, but at this point, they're, they couldn't be happier.
So, Opal has a track record that you looked at of this type of development?
The principals in Opal have a long track record. Opal's a relatively new firm, they're doing some projects, they're doing some housing in downtown Westfield for Westfield State, they're doing a project in Springfield, but it's a relatively short track record under the term Opal. Peter Picnelli has obviously done a lot of development projects in the Springfield area. We just had a ribbon cutting today at the state hospital for a project which Opal is going to be owning on the corner of the Old Hill Road and Route 66. So, they're clearly a player in a lot of different projects.
Okay, so, should we pass this, then? If the deal with Opal falls apart, this is in place?
This won't be signed, if Opal doesn't take title to the property, this won't be signed. So, you're authorizing the Mayor to accept this. That lets us then go to Mass. Historic Commission and get them to agree to approve this, but the actual signing won't happen until Historic Round Hill Summit LLC actually takes title to the property. I don't know. They believe soon, I mean, possibly by the end of the year, but I don't know.
So, our approval of this, or tonight, or acceptance, or whatever you want to, it doesn't automatically put this in place?
That's correct. It authorizes us to accept it, which lets us go to the state and get their approval. The signature won't actually happen until probably five minutes after Opal takes title to the property.
So, Clark School will not be bound by this reservation? If that deal falls apart, I just want to make that fix really clear.
Yes, it's absolutely correct.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Any other discussion? All right. Thank you, Wayne. This is going to require roll call votes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Boyd?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Schwartz?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, we have successfully prosecuted our first... Yeah, was there any new business?
Oh, yes, not really new business. Did we talk about the holiday parade?
No.
Appointments?
If you want to do this in announcement...
Yes, I'd like to make an announcement. The holiday parade, November 24th, starts at the Trinity Park in Florence at 10 o'clock, and if you're going to...
Oh, no.
I had it in front of me here a minute ago, I'm trying to think it out of my head here now, without...
I'm going to show up with my Santa...
Who's got it? Somebody has it in front of them. Somebody has it in front of them. It's at 10 o'clock, November 24th, starts at the Trinity Park, and it ends up at Florence Civic for the Michael Curtin...
There's a double loop and steps off. Steps off and says, Counselor...
Is that Saturday?
It's always a ball.
It's Saturday.
Saturday, yeah, it's always a great time, we always have a great turnout. I just want to make sure everybody knows that it is happening.
Great opportunity to pick Andy up off the street. I thank you all, this is, I would now entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Bill, nice job, Bill.
Good job.
You did it.
What did I do with that noise added here?
What did you do with that?